Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the board of this meeting on the 6th of January 2022, City National Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Dauntis, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper here. Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson. Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Sure.
Mark Meehan.
Here.
Okay, so we have enough for our quorum. We'll start going through our agenda here. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. So in your packet, you have minutes from the December 2nd, 2021 meeting. I'll start with those. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Meehan?
So moved.
Grant, we have a motion to accept as written by Mr. Meehan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously. Next up, we also have minutes from the December 16th Planning Board. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written?
Move to approve.
All right, so you have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept these as written for December 16th. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan? Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Stayed.
All right, so we have two abstentions. But that motion passes. So those are approved as well?
Hoop stayed.
It was Varley and Ballinger.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have our communications.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. The following communications arrived after your packet went out. 303 Main Street, case A210256, New Hampshire Code of Administrative Health topic letter. Greater Nashua Smart Start Coalition Letter. Email from Mike Affleberger, President United Way, dated December 3rd, 2021. Email from Carol Baldwin, Executive Director Nashville Adult Learning Center, dated December 3rd, 2021. Email from Heather Raymond, President Nashville Board of Education, December 3rd, 2021. And email from Sandra Pratt, Bilingual Service Coordinator, Gateway Community Services, December 6th, 2021. Next, 131 Glenwood, case A210267. Waiver from Keats-Norstrom Existing Conditions, January 3rd, 2022. Email from Sean Azarowski, dated January 4th, 2022. Waiver from Keats-Norstrom for Architectural Materials, dated January 5th, 2022. Email from Wayne Husband, Senior Traffic Engineer, Contribution DW Highway Corridor Account, dated January 6th, 2022. Architectural Features Update, Keats-Norstrom, dated January 6th, 2022. 11 Northwest Boulevard, case A210286, Letter from Joe Mandola, dated January 3rd, 2022, Street Construction Engineer. 136 East Hollis Street, case A210287, Letter from Joe Mandola, Street Construction Engineer, dated January 4th, 2022. Email from Wayne Husband, Senior Traffic Engineer, dated January 4th, 2022, East Hollis Street Corridor Contribution. Email from Mark Propagula, Nashville Fire, dated January 6th, 2022, No Issues. And that's it.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, next up, any reports of committee or liaison items?
Only one, just that I attended the HDC meeting on the 13th where we saw two cases. One was for windows at 53 Concord Street for a home that actually had a fire, so that did pass, which is good, they can proceed with that project. And the other was for signage at 25 Canal Street, which also passed.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So, after each legal notice of conditional special use permit site plan or subdivision is read by myself, we'll first determine that the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulation, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Then next, I'll ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan may speak. If you're here in person, you will come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If it's on Zoom, we'll either ask you to unmute or raise your hand and again, state your name and address for the record. This is the time for you to express your concern or ask any questions you have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. After that, the board may ask some relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any concerns read by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances for subdivisions, conditional special use permits, site plans. Thank everybody at this point for their interest and attention. If you do have a cellphone in the room here, please go ahead and turn it off, put it on vibrate. If you are online on Zoom, please stay muted until you want I give opportunity for public to make comments. Okay, so with that being said, first up on the agenda, old business conditional special years permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, this first case A21-0177 was tabled to our March 10th, 2022 meeting. I don't think we need any motions or anything on that. Next up is old business site plan. This is case A21-0256, SD Realty LLC owner, Zafaj Shodhary applicant. This is a proposed change of use to smoke shop and associated site improvements. This property is located at 303 Main Street. So this site plan was tabled from our December 2nd, 2021 meeting. Seems like we have someone here from the applicant for the board. In order to open this back up, we'd need a motion to reopen the hearing. And I think this was for the purpose of several items specifically to talk more with the applicant about the use of the building, any proposed changes to the plan. There was some concern, I think by the board, expressed about visibility to the adjacent abutters. And then there was also questions about, you know, what the intent of the use was from the owner. So, anybody from the board want to open the hearing? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to remove case number A21-0256 from the table.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley to remove A21-0256 from the table. Take it back into, or open the hearing. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so this application is now open again. So it looks like we have somebody from the applicant. Go ahead, if you want to present any further information, this will be your time.
Yes. Hi, my name is Katie Weiss. I'm with Bedford Design Consultants. We're the engineers for the project. I am a landscape architect and the project manager. I'm here tonight via Zoom with the owner, Daniel Shodari. He'll be answering some of the questions that you had. At first, I could talk about when we were here last time, we're here for a change of use for our site plan. The existing use is a restaurant, the new use is a smoke shop. There are two things.
Hang on one sec.
I haven't heard hearing, and I can't hear without the.
Oh.
I'm pretty close, is the microphone on?
You can try pulling it closer to you.
Is that okay?
The computer makes a lot of noise over here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's better.
That's better?
You gotta get pretty close.
Really close, okay, I'm sorry. There are two things, well, three as you said, that you asked us to come back and discuss. One was to speak with the owner directly about the use and what exactly will be happening at the smoke shop. And the other is to meet with the abutters and talk about ways to mitigate or screen the use. So if you don't mind, first I'll talk about my meeting with the abutter.
Yep.
I met with them on Monday. I met with both Carol Baldwin and Jane Markey, both of the Adult Learning Center next door. I'll show you some pictures. Here is one, looking from our property onto theirs. There is a short, two-foot retaining wall that's concrete, and then on top of that is an iron, wrought iron. And then behind that is another retaining wall that is a wooden retaining wall, and on top of that is a plastic chain link fence. It's green and it has slats alternating through it. When I met with them on Monday, we talked about several different ideas of things that might possibly buffer the site or mitigate any of the issues that they had. We talked about putting signs up on the premises, saying no smoking on the premises. We talked about replacing their chain link fence and putting in a privacy fence so that you couldn't see our use at all. We talked a little bit about buffering with vegetation. That was difficult because the whole, there's a parking space that's kind of, kind of close to that parking, that retaining wall on one side. There's a few places where we can do that, but not all the way across. We also talked about putting more slats in their existing chain link fence. During our meeting, they felt that none of these would really mitigate their concerns. So I went back and spoke to the owner and we came up with some ideas for ourselves. Here's a view from their site up on the playground. You can see through the slats and you can see the iron fence, and then here's our building here. Here's what we're going to propose for tonight. We're gonna propose six signs. They're denoted with these little asterisks here in red. There are six of them that will say no loitering or smoking on premises, will even be one right at the door. They also expressed concern across the street at the gas station, there's often groups of people being loud and such, so I thought I'd add loitering to the sign, saying people get in your cars and go home when you're done, basically. The other thing we talked about was putting in a retaining wall, a three-foot retaining wall in this area, screening a good portion of the parking here. This is employee parking, so it shouldn't be an issue. And then putting some evergreen use above that, and at the time of planting, including the wall, that should be about an eight-foot high buffer, which should be tall enough to actually reach this very high fence here. So that's what the owner and I discussed to mitigate his site. He's also here tonight. I don't know if you want him to do his presentation first, or if you want to talk about mine. How would you like to proceed?
Say that again?
Would you like him to talk now, or would you like to respond to my portion of the?
It's up to the board. Anybody have a preference? Why don't we hear from the owner?
Okay, all right. Daniel Shodari. I'll mute myself.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Well, it's a little quiet.
Speak up a little.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Great, it might be our speakers in here.
Yeah, Dan, you're going to have to speak up.
One second, give me one second. Is this better? Or can you, can you guys hear my sound at all?
It's not great.
It's not great. Give me one second. Let me try reconnecting from my cellphone then, if my laptop speaker's not that good.
Hang on a sec, we're working on our end.
Excuse me, sir, if you could go into your settings and turn off your auto level control on your microphone, please.
All right, okay, so you said go into Settings?
Your microphone setting, turn off auto level control. It's softens it and it messes the whole thing up. And if anyone else listening on Zoom, if you could do the same thing at this time, that would be very helpful. Thank you very much.
Give me one second.
I think he's calling in on another number.
Is this good now?
Dan, I think it's more of an issue on our end, so if you can just speak up a little bit, we'll do our best to listen closely.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I don't wanna, okay. Yeah, hello, how you guys doing today? So yeah, we had, we were told that you guys were asking what we want to do with the store. So basically, we're gonna do a smoke shop, it's gonna be mostly just vapes and cigarettes, convenience items being, you know, snacks, candy, and drinks. There's absolutely no smoking on premises, you just buy your stuff and, you know, leave. And, you know, we don't want to deal with any mess with that, having people around, you know, just buy your stuff and just to stop, to pick up your stuff and leave. And majority of the stuff we're gonna be carrying is cigarettes, vapes, candy, and some small soft drinks, basically a convenience store.
Okay. Questions for the owner by the board? Could you go over your hours of operation?
Yeah, we already have a couple of the stores up in Salem and Seabrook, and we're gonna do about the same hours from 7:00 in the morning until about 10:00 o'clock at night. Those are what we're aiming for.
So it's a convenience store? Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear, but it sounded like you were saying it's a convenience store. That's really what it is.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Seven, I said seven in the morning until 10:00 o'clock at night, those are our hours.
Could you repeat like what you're intending to sell there?
Yeah, I said we're planning on selling cigarettes, vapes, candy, and like drinks, soda, water, stuff like that. So basically, a convenience type of store, with a little emphasis on the vape portion.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the owner at this point? Mr. Hirsch?
Is smoking gonna be permitted outside the building on the property? Or is it just within?
No smoking whatsoever.
I'm sorry?
No smoking at all, on the property, in the property, no, like, we just wanna sell, and, you know, that's basically it. There's no, nobody allowed to smoke on premises or in the property as well.
Okay. Other questions by the board? For the owner? Great. Did you have some more things that you wanted to go over on the plan?
Nope, just that's what we had talked about for buffers and mitigation of the site, the wall with the plantings and the signs.
Could you explain a little bit more about what's being done, where the fences are now, or what's proposed to be done?
At the moment, there's nothing proposed in between, there's just a grassed area in between, if you feel like I can pull up the landscape plan.
Yeah, pull that back up. Cause you talked about a retaining wall essentially along the street, right?
The retaining wall is between the two properties.
Oh, between the two properties.
Here we go. This is the landscape plan. So right now, we just show, this is all paved, we're just showing turning it into grass. So we're proposing putting in, right in this area, the retaining wall and the plantings to buffer between the two properties, cause this is where the parking will be, right on this side. This is the employee parking, so it's just these four spaces.
And then, what was the proposed signage again?
Yep. So, sorry, this did not print well. It's a very bright yellow, but it doesn't look like that, it's green. So right now, on top of the building is the existing Port Pierre sign, and we will be using that in Smokers Lane Smoke Shop with the address 303 on it. And right now, there's also a sign in the front of the building, Port Pierre in the window, and so we'll have a smoke shop sign there as well.
All right. Okay, other questions by the board? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you. There's a number of emails that came that we're reading just as background for this case. Would you just take a minute and review some of the others improvements you're making to the site?
Sure.
I just wanna make sure, cause, you know, there was a comment that you're gonna just paint the building white and it's gonna be the same, and I remember from the previous presentation, there was quite a bit of asphalt removal, there was additional plantings being done. Would you mind just walking through that briefly?
Sure, I can do that. So right now, the site is pretty much entirely paved, this is the, this is the existing conditions. So this is the pavement line, it's here and here, and everything else is paved, and then the building is right here. So what we're planning on doing here, site plan portion, is adding grass in this area, grass in this area, grass here, and all along here with acceptance of the sidewalk. And then we'll be adding landscaping along the front of the building and over by the air conditioning unit.
Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
This may have already been asked, but as far as entering the shop, do you have to be 21 or just to purchase tobacco products?
That would be a question for Daniel, I don't know the answer to that.
Is he still on?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, stop sharing, okay.
Okay.
When you're sharing, it's the, the, the super noisy, so it's a hard drive.
Yeah, in order to buy tobacco, you have to be 21 years old, yes.
But what about entering the store itself?
Yeah, you gotta be 21, yeah, you gotta be 21 to enter the smoke shop, yes.
To come into the store, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Meehan?
I'm sorry, I'm just confused. So, it's called the smoke shop, that's the designated name you guys want to use, but it's really a convenience store that's gonna sell candy, soft drinks, vaping products, and cigarettes, but you have to be 21 to go in. Is that all correct? I just wanna make sure I understand what the use is gonna be.
That's a question for Daniel.
Yes, sir. The requirement for all our other stores are also 21 to enter. We have, yeah, we do have, we don't have a crazy amount of candy, we just maybe a couple things, and then we just have drinks, that's just the average stuff. In order to enter our store to buy tobacco, to do any of that stuff, you have to be 21, you check out the door. Yes, sir.
Other questions by the board? All right, not hearing any questions by the board at this point. Is anybody in the audience, I'm gonna start with within the room here, that wishes to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question of the plan? Not seeing anybody. Then we'll go to online. If there's somebody that like, you can just.
It looks like Mr. Affleberg has his hand raised.
Good evening, can you hear me okay in the audience?
We can.
Okay, very good. I'm Mike Affleberg, I'm the President of the United Way of Greater Nashua, we're located at 20 Broad Street in Nashua, and I do have a short statement I wanted to read.
Okay.
So, so we wanted to share our organization's concern over the proposal to place a smoke shop in the prior location of Port Pierre's Restaurant on Main Street. As you are aware, this location is directly adjacent to the Adult Learning Center. The Adult Learning Center is an agency which provides educational programming to people of all ages, including preschoolers, as well as adolescents working to achieve their high set degree or improve their English proficiency. As a result, at their location on Lake Street, there are a large number of underage youth on a regular basis. It is our concerted opinion that it is patently unwise to allow a smoke shop to be placed in this environment. There is no shortage of data to prove out the point that it is, that easy access to tobacco products is a primary contributor to higher rates of use. And the products being marketed nowadays are targeted with their appealing flavors specifically to youth. And these highly addictive products containing literally hundreds of chemicals are extremely unhealthy for the consumer. So the question begs, do we really want to approve this business in that location? My question, my guess is, we might have no choice, but if we could choose, we would say this is a patently bad idea. What's more, there doesn't appear to be any current legal basis for declining this business and expansion into selling marijuana products when the time finally arrives in New Hampshire that cannabis retail stores are allowed. In my opinion, we should act now to prevent this type of business from co-locating near youth organizations or schools because of the inherent risks to health and safety. To that end, we have begun working with city leadership to amend our zoning ordinances in a way which would, in the future, give us more firm footing for denying such a business access to such a location. At United Way, we are firmly committed to creating a healthy community, and in such a community, it is critical to ensure that youth are protected and safe to the extent possible. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you.
Carol Baldwin, raise her hand.
Go ahead. Carol, can you state your name and address for record?
Hello, my name is Carol Baldwin, and I live at 42 Diamond Back in Nashua, New Hampshire. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. When I spoke at this meeting in December, I focused on the fact that our schoolyard, where our little ones play, abuts the property where the smokehouse will be. This evening, I'd like to tell you about another population we serve, and that is teenagers. We run the largest high set prep and high set testing program in the state of New Hampshire. High Set is the former GED. Teenagers who have dropped out of high school will come to our school and take the test to assess their ability to pass the high set exam. It's extremely rare that anyone can simply then register to take the exam. Most of these teens need to take classes in one or more subjects and will be with us for many months, some will be with us for years. Annually, we serve about 200 teenagers. The teenagers who come to us to prepare for high set exams are generally coping with other challenges. They often live in poverty, many are couch surfing or even homeless. They often lack a strong parent, which makes them more likely to participate in dangerous activities and more susceptible to the lure and bet of advertising, particularly with respect to tobacco products. According to CDC statistics, youth use of tobacco products in any form is unsafe. Tobacco product use is started and established primarily in adolescents. Nearly nine of 10 adults who smoke cigarettes daily first tried smoking before they were 19 years old. And this is the statistic that most startled me. According to the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, as stated in a September 9th, 2020 press release by the New Hampshire Division of Public Health, quote, "Unfortunately, New Hampshire's rate of electronic vape product use..." of electronic vape product use among youth remains among the highest in the nation. Teenage vaping continues to be a large concern among public health professionals in the state of New Hampshire." Factors associated with youth tobacco product use include seeing tobacco products advertised in stores, on television, and the internet, accessibility, availability of products, in locations, in smokehouse locations, the cigarette shops, in lower socioeconomic status areas. I, too, am working with Mike Affenberg and other in-concerned citizens in our community, trying to come up with an ordinance that will prevent this. Unfortunately, I've come to understand that I will likely be the poster child for Don't Let This Happen to You. Thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Christina Cruz, raised her hand.
Good evening. Christina Cruz from the Nashville Prevention Coalition. I just want to echo both Mike and Carol and leave you with some facts. 1,900 is the number of people who die from smoking each year. 480,000 people in the United States die from cigarette smoking or secondhand smoke. 3,200 is the number of youth per day under the age of 18 who smoke their first cigarette. Nine out of 10 smokers start by the age of 18. And, cigarette smoking remains the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. 1,300 number, is the number of people who die each day in the United States due to smoking-related diseases. 158 are the number of people in the state of New Hampshire who die from smoking. 729 million is the amount of money spent on smoking-related health care costs, and zero amount is the state, of state money for tobacco use. However, New Hampshire does receive money from the CDC. So, I ask in closing, do we really need another smoke shop? The Nashville Prevention Coalition's mission is healthy kids grow healthy communities. I beg you to help grow our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Velik, Janet Velik?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Janet Velik. I'm, I live at 41 Roy Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, and I am a retired health education teacher. I started at Elm Street Middle School and then finished my career at the high school. This goes against everything, and thank you, Christina, for the information, because you sounded like you were teaching one of my classes with, with the statistics you shared. I don't have a prepared statement, but I would like to add that with all of the Elm Street students that could potentially be walking down by the facility, they will be seeing the signage in the windows. And, if anybody has ever driven by any convenience store, whether you are a convenience store, a vape shop, a tobacco shop, a smoke shop, what you want to call it, they are highly influenced by those images. We spent many years trying to get all the stores to reduce the number of signage with, with little luck. And, add into that is, we already have a tobacco store up, up at the intersection where Ald Street meets Main Street, and another vape shop down across from where Walgreens is. So, basically, within less than a half a mile of this proposed building are two other shops where people can walk in and get their addiction fixed, which it is truly nicotine is the most addictive substance out there. It's even more addictive than heroin. So, we have in prevention what's called the perception of risk. When perception of risk is reduced, usage goes up. So, you claim that you are going to card everybody when they walk in, they have to be 21 to walk in, and that's admirable. However, just walking by the signage, it will, it will reduce the perception of risk. Here, we have another facility selling something that is extremely dangerous to young people, not only adults, but the young people and their developing brains. And, added another statistic that a young person's brain does not fully develop until they were 25, and the one thing that is not functioning until that age is their ability to make decisions appropriately. So, as a resident, as a former health education teacher, that basically, I have used my entire career to try to have kids grow up healthy and happy and productive, and not have to deal with potential future illnesses and, that they could acquire from using both vapes and regular cigarettes. One of the other things that now we are seeing is that vapes are being used for marijuana, and that is very, very concerning. So, they can buy their vapes, kids go in that are 21, they buy them, they bring them back to the schools, they sell them at an elevated cost to kids that are younger. It's just a vicious circle. So, thank you very much for listening, and I don't know if this is cast in stone or not. If it is, I'm extremely sad about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any others with hands up, but you're welcome to unmute if you'd like to speak at this time. Don't see anybody.
Okay.
Looks like Dan would like to potentially respond to some of those comments.
Yeah, let me first ask, is there anybody in the audience here or online wishing to speak in support? Okay, hearing done. Yep, I will give the applicant and the owner the opportunity to rebut or provide further information regarding the public testimony.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I understand you guys' concerns. You know, it's 100%, you know, I, I understand. But, I just want to give you guys some statistics as to our other stores. We already have a couple stores, one in St. Elman, here, one in Seabrook, New Hampshire. And, I, I get what you guys are saying, cigarettes, vapes are very dangerous. Majority of our sales are actually in vapes, and a majority of our customers are over the age of 50, and they're trying to get off cigarettes. Cigarettes is very harmful, I understand that. I've seen it firsthand. We have stores in Pennsylvania, South Carolina, whatever. The, the cigarettes are very dangerous, I admit that. But, the vapes are really saving lives, they're changing things, because there's less tar and stuff like that. The chemicals that are in cigarettes is, is not, not very safe. But, the vapes, I've seen a lot of elderly people in our stores. We, 85% of our sales are people who are 50 years and older, actually. We don't have really a young population in our stores. And, the vapes are really helping them get off of cigarettes. And, also today, the new vapes that are coming out, there's actually something, I don't know if you guys have noticed, called Flare Plus Zero. It's actually a vape with zero nicotine in it. So, I mean, we're trying to make the, we're trying to, you know, our sales, what our main goal is right now, is to get people more into the vapes portion. I'm not trying to start the younger generation off, you know, that type of stuff. We're not really, we're not doing that type of ID people. We don't really like young people near us in our stores and stuff like that. But, less than 10% of our sales in New Hampshire are cigarettes, majority of them are vapes, and majority of them are just old people trying to get off cigarettes. And, like I mentioned before, there actually are vapes today that are coming out with no nicotine that I see elderly people using. You know, it's saving them, you know, countless years on their life, it's saving them a lot of pain that they feel doing cigarettes and stuff like that. So, I just wanted to say that about the concerns.
Okay. Uh, any, so, at this point, we've heard back from the applicant. This would be the time for the board to ask any further questions of the applicant, their engineer or staff while we're still in the hearing. Any further questions by the board? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that to sell tobacco in the state of New Hampshire, you have to have a license, and I don't want to get outside of our parameters. But, I am curious to the, the owner, do you have a license for this store, or is, is this whole plan the first step, and then if you're able to move forward, you would then pursue a license for the store?
Yeah, that's how it works. You're supposed to have the location, the, it's supposed to, you know, fire zone, the fire department's supposed to come and everything like that. Everything needs to be done before we get a license and, yeah.
So, you don't have a license for the store currently? You would get one after your purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other questions by the board? Okay, so, no further questions by the board. Thank you for your presentation, and I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and start the public meeting. So, we've, we've got some feedback from the applicant. There's been a couple of plan changes, obviously, since we saw this last, some sort of attempts at buffering to some extent. But, I'm interested to hear, you know, comments from the board on which way you're, what you're thinking, and what your comments may be. Ms. Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, for me, when I look at what the site plan approval criteria are for, for this, this plan, you know, I don't, I don't feel that it meets all of them. A few of them, one is number five, the proposed shall not have significant health and safety impacts on surrounding properties or on the general population of the city. You know, being right next to a preschool, you know, I don't feel like it meets that criteria in that case. You know, number four, to coexist with the surrounding uses. You know, does it really coexist with a preschool learning center next door? And, and number one, the site plan, is that consistent with the objectives and strategies of our city's master plan to be approving smoke shops next to a learning center?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Great, okay. Other board member comments? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I guess I would, I would say, you know, you personally, again, and I talked about this last time, you know, if I were choosing, this, this would not be the use I would choose for this particular location. With that said, you know, we as the board have to operate within the limits of, you know, the zoning ordinances and the criteria that we use to decide, you know, whether a, a site plan meets those, you know, the ordinance requirements. And, I note that a couple of the commentators noted that there are several other locations in close proximity to this proposed store that are selling tobacco products, including two very similarly advertised and designated smoke shops, one across from Walgreens and one just down the other side of Main Street. And, so, while I am very much sympathetic to the concerns, and again, you know, in my own personal view, would, would not choose this as a use, I, I just don't know that there's a basis in these site plan approval criteria for denying the application, you know, particularly in light of the, the other, you know, similar uses in, in close proximity. And, you know, Ms. Harper, I, I was looking at number five on the list, too, because I was, you know, thinking about whether that, you know, might have an impact on, you know, our, you know, consideration of approval of this plan. But, it seems to me that that speaks to the health and safety impacts of the use itself, which is really what I think distinguished from what we're talking about, which is the secondary impact, which is, you know, the products that people are buying are harmful, you know, to the people that are using them. But, I don't know if the use itself poses a health risk. I mean, you know, my own view is that that is aimed at something, you know, different. It anticipates that the, like I said, the actual use on the property is, is harmful. And, so, you know, again, while I, I'm sympathetic to the concerns, I think I mentioned last time, you know, I have a seventh grader at Elm Street, and so, this would not be my choice. I just, I just don't see a basis, you know, for us to, to make the choice to say, no, you know, we're not going to approve this here, you know, in light of the fact that it's expressly permitted under the zoning ordinances. And, I just, I just don't see us having the discretion here.
Mr. Meehan?
May I ask a question? Just to, because, you know, you know, you've done this more than I have. I really liked the use of number four, and I thought that was a really interesting point. The proposed use shall be able to coexist with the surrounding uses, and the proposed use shall not have significant impact on the surrounding uses, right? And, we have a butters who have been very clear about their belief that it does. Is that, I'm just trying to understand more, how do we weigh that when a butter says, yes, it will?
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, I'll just, you know, speak from my own perspective, and, and, you know, other folks may just, may totally disagree with me. You know, to me, that, that criteria, number four, and I, I guess I would back up and say, I mean, I look at it from the perspective of, the Board of Alderman has adopted, you know, zoning ordinances that establish sort of the parameters of what they think are uses that are consistent with one another within a particular zone. And, in this case, they have not, you know, limited the uses in this zone to say, no, sale tobacco products is not a permitted use or it's a conditionally permitted use. It's, it's a use that's permitted by right. And, you know, when I look at number four, I would say, you know, if, in order to, to say it couldn't coexist, you know, I view that as a pretty high bar.
Okay.
You know, that you would have to have, you know, I guess I think of, some example, it wouldn't fit within the sort of zoning part, but if you had like an industrial use in a residential neighborhood, you'd say that, that can't coexist with the, because there's this sort of divergence here. I guess I just don't see that particularly given, you know, the, the other similar uses in such close proximity as well. Like, you know, Mr. Ballinger, you noted last time, there's a Shell station, which is like equidistant almost from, you know, the, the learning center that also sells tobacco products. So, you know, again, that's just my own perspective. I, I recognize that other people could have an equally, you know, valid and different interpretation, but, but that's how I look at it.
That's really helpful. Thanks.
Other comments? Mr. Hurry?
No, I personally oppose smoking, but I don't see how we can possibly deny this use. I mean, it is, you know, permitted by zone, right, in the zoning regulations. So, I think, I think our hands are tied.
Yeah. I'll put my comments in. Again, I don't, I don't love the use on the site. I, you know, the planning board, having been on it for a long time, we do have certain limitations on what we can do. That being said, we do have actually quite a bit of latitude with what the building looks like, what the site is laid out as, and how the traffic and pedestrian flow on the site works. So, you know, I think things like the sign are purely in our jurisdiction. We could say no to that. We could say no to any sign that we want on a building. You know, that's architectural character, that's, that's the, the land and the, and the building and the use. So, you know, I mean, yeah. I don't know what I'm getting at, other than, you know, if people are concerned about the visibility of the building and the use, we can limit the hours, we can limit the, the visibility of the building, we can limit the aesthetics of the building, we can limit the site. We can, we can require more buffering if we want. That is all in our jurisdiction, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
So, if you're not, if, as a board, you're not happy with any of those things, you can comment on that, and you can demand more of the applicant. You can disapprove of the plan because you don't like those things, you know? I do think, to Mr. Barley's point, it's tough to disapprove something based on a use that is permitted, on that, permitted on that site. But, you can absolutely disapprove something based on the layout of the site and the aesthetics of the building, the signage, the flow, all of that is absolutely within the purview of the board, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Buffering is a big one. We absolutely required or disapproved based on buffering. Buffering is a big one. We absolutely required or disapproved based on buffering in the past. So I would recommend, if you have issue, you think of it in those land use terms, and you decide if one of those is something that isn't acceptable to you as the plan is presented. Because we're discussing and voting on this plan. So. Mr. Mann?
And if you don't, and again, I'm just trying to understand this better. I really value your perspectives. So we have this document that has been laminated in our folders, and I've read it several times, wondering, this laminated thing must be important. And number four to me is something I was thinking about, that Maggie makes that statement, which I thought was really well done. If a abutters, I mean, part of what I'm trying to understand in number four is, it's very clear in a sense that shall be able to coexist. It's grammatically incorrect in the translation here, but it's, I understand it. But what I don't understand is, we have a abutter saying it does not coexist with our use. So is it, what I hear Adam saying is that we defer back to the zoning and yourself, you know, the permitting. Okay, if that's the authority, then what role do the abutters have? How does that work as we balance this out?
Yeah, and I, so I mean, I do think it's, I think there are two things, I think, as Mr. Clair said, you know, there is a lot that we can do in terms of the features of the plan. And I get, I would sort of distinguish between the use itself, you know, and let's say it wasn't a smoke shop, let's say it was a gas station, you know, or a more typical convenience store, or a small restaurant, right? You know, I don't think we have a lot of discretion in those cases where it's an explicitly permitted use to say, we are going to deny this because of the proposed use. But as Mr. Sinclair said, we could certainly say we have concerns about traffic, or concern about traffic flow on the site. You know, there had been a comment about, you know, making a left turn on the Lake Street, for example. So there are certainly actions we could take, and, you know, largely, I think, the conversation we're having with abutters is, what is your concern, and how can we address that?
Okay.
Through the discretion we have in terms of, as Mr. Clair was saying, the land use elements of the site, as opposed to the sort of the base use. And I think to your, your sort of fundamental question about, well, if a abutter is saying that the use can't coexist, how do we resolve that? And I would say, I think there's got to be something objectively more to it than that.
Okay.
Because there are plenty of instances where abutters say, I don't think this two-lot subdivision, you know, I object to it because, you know, this was bare land before with trees, and I don't want somebody to take the trees down, you know. And somebody could frame that in the sense of it doesn't coexist with my use. And so I think there's got to be something, and I'm not suggesting that they, that there's not legitimate concerns that are being expressed here. But I think it's got to be something at sort of an objective level where we can say, yes, there's clearly, there's a conflict between these uses
Yep.
That we wouldn't be able to resolve if we approved this site.
Very helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, and I would add that I think that, you know, number four, buffering does interplay with that. You know what I mean? We wouldn't let an airport be adjacent to a residential area without a blast wall from the jets in front. It's a totally different scenario, but we would require.
Right.
But it's also not inherent upon the board to come up with the solutions to this. Don't feel like you have to be the solver. If this plan is laid out, you don't believe it has the components, the land use components, that make it acceptable to all of these, you don't have to solve it. That can't be your reason for disapproval. You know, we're not here to solve issues per se. The plan that's in front of us is the plan we're looking at. There are times when we say, it looks like it's close, we think if you take it back and try again, you'd get it, you know, add some things. If we don't think that there's enough buffering, or this or that, that's reasonable, or it doesn't matter, it's not going to be possible. That can be a basis, you know.
Okay.
But you should frame that in a land use and around the components of the plan, I think more so. But the use can be part of what's required to determine the buffering and the flow and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, the use of a drive-through is a lot different than a non-drive-through, and it requires different site things. That's use-related, right? So that's my two cents, so.
And I would just say, you know, with all that said, in terms of, you know, those different considerations, you know, to your point that this is, we have to consider the particular plan before us, you know, none of the abutters express concern, I think, about land, like sort of site layout issues, right? With the exception of the buffering, but it's, even with the buffering, it sounds like ultimately what, you know, the Adult Learning Center was saying, well, it's really not about the buffering. It's about having a smoke shop abutting our property, period. That's ultimately the issue. And that's where I come back to. I don't think we can solve that issue. So, you know, yes, we can require additional budding, buffering, we can, you know, impose reasonable requirements in terms of signage, et cetera, but we can't solve that, you know, that fundamental issue.
And it would seem to me that the work done by the applicant is quite thorough in their attempt to work with neighbors, with abutters, to address physical plant issues in that space. Like, there's quite an effort being made to make it viable for the neighborhood. There's an intention to try to make it work. And the plan seems to follow the guidelines that we would have, right? I mean, the city doesn't have an opposition to this.
So at this point, I guess, does anybody else have any other comments, or does somebody need to make a motion one way or another? You can make a motion to approve, you can make a motion to disapprove, if you make a motion to disapprove, you need to have a specific approval criteria that you don't think you're meeting, and some, there has not to be a lot of discretion, but something that says why you think that's the case. And we can vote on it. I think that's the best way to go. Let's assume that nobody wants to table it again. I mean, I feel like it's a reasonable, we've done some due diligence here.
Yeah, my view on that is, I mean, I don't think there's a basis to table. I mean, I don't think there's, I don't think there's more information or more work to be done that's going to change, again, the sort of fundamental issue. I mean, I guess I would say, I would be willing to make a motion to approve, but I'm also willing to refrain from doing that if someone is inclined to make a motion to disapprove, and we want to consider that first.
Yeah, I would generally say we would, if somebody wants to make that motion, to do that first, because it makes the approval one is kind of, if it doesn't pass, we still have to keep going. So for the disapproval.
Right, right. That's all, yeah, all I'm saying is I want to, yeah, wanted to open up, didn't want to jump in. If someone wants to make a different motion than that.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yeah.
And that is, and I'm probably not supposed to compare this to something else, but I, another high-traffic business had brought a plan before us before, and, you know, I did not approve it because I did not like the traffic pattern, the left onto Lake Street, and the left onto Main Street. And I would have to say that I feel the same way about this plan, the left on the Lake Street with, you know, just the general traffic in that area, another, you know, high-traffic business across the street. I just, I don't like that. And I would say I'd make a motion to disapprove.
Okay. And being stoned, which criteria? I mean, you can have multiple.
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure exactly which one would relate to the.
It's eleven would be the.
Okay, eleven. The site plan provides adequate means of handling onsite vehicular ingress and egress movements in relation to traffic movements along the abutting street.
Okay. All right. So we have that motion to disapprove based on that traffic issue. Do you have a second on that?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Herr.
Just push it through.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote on it. All those in favor?
In favor of disapproving, right?
Yeah, for that reason.
Aye.
Any further?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, okay. All those opposed to that?
Aye.
So that's four choose, so that one doesn't work. Anybody else want to make a motion? All right. Mr. Barley, do you want to make your?
Yeah, I can do that. So I would make a motion to approve all business site plan, case number eight twenty-one dash zero-two-five-six, S.D. Realty LLC owner, so far, Chodri applicant. That motion would be the finding if the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan narrow section one ninety dash one forty-six D and one ninety dash twenty-three F. And that approval will include a total of ten stipulations. The first four of those stipulations are waiver requests, one being a request for a waiver from one ninety dash one seventy-two, requiring building elevations, and that read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulation. Stipulation number two being a request for a waiver of one ninety dash two seventy-five, requiring a lighting plan, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulation. Number three being a request for a waiver of one ninety dash two seventy-nine C.C. and one ninety dash two fourteen to two eighteen, requiring a stormwater report and management plan, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulation. Number four being a request for a waiver from section one ninety dash two eighty-three, requiring a traffic impact analysis, that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulation. Stipulation number five, Scott, do we have a date to fill in there?
We'll present a date.
Okay.
December first, 2021.
Sorry, what was that date?
December first.
December first, 2021.
Great, thank you. Stipulation number five will be updated to include the date of December first, 2021. And then stipulations six through ten shall read as written in the staff report.
For twenty seconds, Mr. Barley, I would, or if you might amend that, have another stipulation that that large smoke shop sign on top of the building is not there. I don't like the aesthetics of that, but.
If the sign is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, they have permission to install the sign as proposed. So it's, you did make a comment about signage jurisdiction. The board has some jurisdiction, but ultimately, if the sign that's proposed is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, it is, it can be approved.
Yeah.
So it is a bit of a fuzzy line, but I would caution against the board putting any condition on signage.
Yeah, all right.
Unless it poses a real risk to public health, safety, welfare, which I don't think that particular case it does.
If I understood correctly, they're essentially just using, reusing the existing sign.
Yeah, I was just thinking the aesthetics of it. Do we have a grounds on it, aesthetics?
Not for signage.
Not for signage, okay. So that was one of the things. And then, can we get the buffering reviewed by staff to confirm that it wouldn't be, would it physically limit the visibility to the adjacent property at all times of the year? I mean, have them review that design and approve that buffering design with respect to actual visibility?
I'll check with one there.
I think that's an appropriate condition, yes.
Staff's okay with that? Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to add that. Was there anything else?
I wasn't sure about the hours. I love the seven a.m. I think we've had jurisdiction in the past on hours.
You do?
I'd like to see it open after school time, frankly. Like, no earlier than nine a.m.
Are there smoke shop, I mean, the licensing process, is there some, any regulations on that, that the state already has, or is that just?
We have definitely regulated on many of them.
Okay.
If, and if nobody is objectionable, if nobody's objectionable to that, would you want to add that as a number twelve? Okay. So the last two stipulations would be that the.
Yeah, so I'll, yeah, I'll add, so based on the discussion, I am willing to update my motion to add a stipulation number eleven that would require the applicant to present its buffering plan to city staff and to, for city staff to approve the buffering plan to ensure that it's, you know, consistent with actually limiting the visibility from the Adult Learning Center. And then I would add a stipulation number twelve to require that the opening hours of the store be no earlier than nine a.m.
Okay. All right. So we have that motion, Mr. Barley, approved with those, what would be twelve stipulations. Anybody want to second that? Second by Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion, board? Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I just, I wonder what the stipulations do now for the business plan itself, but we don't.
That's not up to us, yeah. Or it's not a, not a, hours and buffering are things we can control.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, ordinarily, we might have had a discussion with the applicant about that issue, you know, as part of the public hearing. You know, if we felt, if you were concerned about that, I mean, we could reopen the hearing and get the applicant's input on that. Alternatively, if, you know, we're of the view that it's not, you know, material impact, you know, we could move forward with that stipulation. I mean, even if the applicant were to say, yeah, I really, I really would not like you to, you know, change the hours so that I can't open until nine a.m., that doesn't mean, you know, Scott said that we can't impose that as a requirement. But that's, I would say, we would more typically have, you know, that issue often would get raised in the public hearings, so the applicant would have, you know, could, you know, express, you know, concerns or say, yeah, that's fine.
Well, we can vote on it, and if they don't, if they don't think it's acceptable. So, we can, we can vote on it, and if they don't, if they don't think it's acceptable, either. Does anybody else feel like they need to open the hearing? All right. So let's vote on this motion.
Do we have a second?
Uh, we did, Mr. Hirsch.
Okay, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So that motion passes board to. Okay, all right, thank you. Let's move it on. All right, next up, uh, new business conditional special use permit, there are none. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plans, this is case number eight twenty-one dash zero two six seven. That's Ross Common Investments LLC owner. This is a proposed site plan amendment to previous auto storage lot by adding a four thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot auction, auto auction building with a six hundred and fifteen, I think that's square foot mezzanine storage area in vehicle storage lot. Property is located at one thirty-one Glenwood Street. I guess first up, does anybody on the board have a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So.
All right, so Mr. Hirsch recommends jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes, so we have somebody from the applicant?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Paul Chisholm with Keach Nordstrom. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Decent, but if you can nearly scream, that would be good.
Sure, how about that? Is that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. I'll hold the microphone right up to my face. I, again, Paul Chisholm, I'm with Keach Nordstrom, where the engineers and surveyor record for the project. Tonight, I'm joined by J. Van Stryver of the Tully Automotive Group and Scott Blasick, who is the project architect. I'm going to share my screen here, so bear with me one moment. Uh, the plan before you tonight is to amend the previously approved auto storage lot. Uh, the amendment includes the addition of a new five thousand square foot auto auction facility located on the south end of the site. This site, uh, obviously, I, I think it's been for the board here a number of times over the last few years, but for those of you who might not be as familiar, um, it is bordered by F. E. Everett Turnpike on the west side, uh, the Toyota, um, auto storage lot directly north, uh, BJ's directly south, and an undeveloped parcel due east. Um, the address is formerly one thirty-one West Glenwood Street. That is where the site enjoys frontage and, um, access to DW Highway from. Uh, the site is a little bit over five acres in total area. It's split zoned, uh, mostly in the highway business district, uh, but the north end of the site is also in the R. A. Urban Residence District as well. Really, the big change is focused on the south end of the site, oh, um, down by the BJ's, and, uh, and really it's in that last section of auto storage, uh, that has really been converted, uh, on this plan to be the five thousand square foot auto auction building. The auction use itself is not open to the public. Uh, if you remember, uh, last time around, this site is really just operated by the Tully Automotive Group. Uh, it's private use only. Um, this will change slightly in that licensed wholesalers only will be able to, uh, attend these auctions. They'll be limited to no more than fifty licensed wholesalers at a time per auction. Auctions are anticipated to be anywhere from one to four times per month, only on weekends. Traditionally, and really for the last few years, they've only done it twice a month. So that's, that's the typical, um, situation now. Uh, the hours of operation are Monday to Saturday, eight AM to five PM, and Sunday from eleven to four. Other changes to the site, uh, in terms of the use of it is with the auto auction here, they will need employees to come up, wash the vehicles, prep them.
Oh, you're kind of fading off a little. Can you, can you speak up a little bit more?
I can't hear.
Thank you.
Yep, um, as I was saying, the, uh, another change in the use of the site is that they'll need employees throughout the week to, uh, go up to the site, um, wash the cars, get them ready for auction, that sort of thing. Um, we've also, this change brings a reduction, obviously, in the total number of cars that can be stored on site to make way for the building, as well as the necessary parking around it. Uh, the storage is reduced from four hundred and six total spaces to three hundred and thirty-seven. There's also thirteen parking spaces, uh, assigned for the auto auction function as well, including two handicap spaces, keeping in compliance with ADA regulations. Uh, overall, the changes, uh, result in a slight decrease in total impervious area on site, uh, which doesn't cause, obviously, any change, um, or, uh, adverse condition to stormwater. Uh, that will all function in the same manner, uh, as the previous approval. We have received comments and got an updated AOT permit for the project. We received comments also from the DPW, the fire department. We are actually ready to resubmit to both of those. Part of the delay on that was, uh, a request that we reach out to Liberty Gas to determine the precise location of the gas service. Uh, the issue being that West Glenwood Street is under moratorium. Uh, we already having the water come from West Glenwood Street, so we did need a special approval last time around. They just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, no new utilities would be coming up West Glenwood, that would upset that. Um, the, the gas itself will actually come from, uh, almost in front of where BJ's is, on Sexton Ave, up through Stetson Street and into the south side of the building. So there's no issues with that. Tracking that down was just a, a little bit of a time-consuming task, so we look forward to responding to them soon. Um, the fire department, uh, we had a couple of comments trying to determine exactly how much pressure and volume, um, are, are in the water system that exists out there. Uh, the last time we went through this process, we weren't allowed to do any hydrant flow tests due to the drought conditions. Um, and that has changed, uh, over the last year, so Pennant Truck was able to get out there, uh, right before Christmas time, I believe, and we got the results we needed. The fire protection engineer is working with the fire department to determine what is needed, if it's, um, you know, adequate as is, if there's sprinklers, if we need to put a tank on the ground, need to.
Hey, Paul, could you, um, could you stop sharing the plan? When you're sharing, we do get additional noise in here a little bit, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah? Cause I think we've seen enough, so, yeah.
Okay, excellent. We also did receive a couple of comments from in a butter, Sean Azarowski, and I apologize if I butchered that name, Sean. He had five points, um, I can go over them quickly. I think that they're easily explained. Basically, the, the, he's questioning, number one, access, why is it only from West Glenwood Street? If you remember with the auto body project that came before you a couple of years back, there was easements that were required on adjacent properties that, um, we couldn't get to put a new road down to Sexton Ave, so, um, that's, that's why that ended up like that, and there was really no need to change that for this amendment. Number two, he talks about, uh, car haulers and deliveries, and just wanted to make sure that, um, that none of that will, like, offloading or unloading will occur in the right of way for West Glenwood or DW Highway. Uh, that was a condition with the last project, that's not going to change. Everything that will happen like that will happen on site. How often will the auto auctions take place and what will the hours of operation be? Again, it's going to be mostly two times a month, it could be as little as one, as many as four, uh, mostly on a Saturday between the hours of eight and five at some point, although obviously not that entire window, uh, just a few hours at a time. A question came up on his end about repairing the road, which is West Glenwood Street. Um, it's obviously, the site's under construction right now with the storage lot. Uh, it's, I'm sure it's a little bit of a mess up at the top of the hill, which is where Sean lives. Uh, yes, that's going to be completely repaired. Uh, like I mentioned, it's under moratorium, so, uh, there's actually, uh, additional requirements that come with that whenever you go into a street that's in moratorium, so basically it's going to be a like-new road at the end of the day. Um, and then his last question was, um, if it's public auctions or dealer only, as I mentioned, it is dealer only. So, um, I think that answers his questions. I do see he's on the call, if he has any additional questions, we can answer those as well. I would like to also mention that, um, they're no longer proposing the mezzanine. There was a sixteen hundred square foot mezzanine, um, as basically a second level above a portion of the building. That is going away, and that just had to do with life safety issues. It was causing too much of a problem with fire safety, so that's been excluded from the proposal. Uh, we are proposing two waivers. The first is to waive, um, locating every existing feature within a thousand feet of the site. Obviously, we got what we needed, um, to make the site, uh, you know, engineered properly and, and designed appropriately. Uh, that was a waiver that was also granted last time around. And then, lastly, there's a, a second waiver. Apparently, this is a steel panel, a mostly a steel panel, uh, building. Um, I, apparently, that's not an allowed material. Um, it's supposed to be more of a stone material or wood, or something along those lines. Um, I would invite, um, Scott Blasick, the project, uh, architect, to discuss that, uh, a little bit more. Um, there's a clause in the land use code that actually says if you have a material that's not approved, but is the same durability of those that is approved and can have similar appearance, and the planning board might be able to find that acceptable. I think that's kind of what we're asking, um, but in order to, uh, better describe that to you, I'm going to invite Scott to describe the materials, the look and feel, the durability, all of those things, as well as just give you a quick overview of the general building design. So Scott, um, if you're on, if you don't mind, uh, jump again. Thank you.
Sure, uh, thank you, Paul. Members of the board, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Excellent. For the record, my name is Scott Blasak from Bruce Hamilton Architects. As Paul mentioned, we're, uh, project architects. Want to keep my presentation kind of brief and focused, and then be happy to answer any questions you may have. Do you all have copies of the exterior elevations?
Yeah.
Available?
We do, yeah.
Okay. What those elevations should show is that, uh, the south, um, elevation and the west elevation, uh, those two elevations are the primary elevations that are visible, uh, from, um, the highway. Those have, uh, well, let me back up a second. The building is very simple in terms of its construction. Uh, as an auction building, we typically will have, um, a, the concrete foundation walls will actually come up three feet above the slab, so, and that's on all four sides of the building. Above that, the building is entirely insulated metal panel, as Paul mentioned. And for anyone who's not familiar with insulated panel, I actually have a, just a sample here. I don't know if you can see that, but it's essentially metal on the inside and the outside, and this layer here is all foam. So it's a very energy-efficient construction. Um, it is metal on the exterior. However, there is an option, uh, for that product to actually have a stucco coating, and I've got kind of a, again, apologize, I'm kind of holding up materials here, but hopefully you can see that, uh, stucco texture to it. So it really changes the appearance quite a bit, um, from, uh, what, you know, we all maybe typically think of as a corrugated metal panel, um, to something that looks very much like stucco. So that's kind of a little bit about the, the building construction. As I mentioned, uh, the concrete, uh, foundation walls coming up three feet, what we've done to address the visibility of the building from the highway is, um, having stone veneer on the south and west sides. The, uh, as Paul mentioned, the auction is only open to dealers, so there's no public coming to this building. Therefore, the visibility of the building coming from, uh, West Glenwood Street, um, as well as from the east is not, those are not considered, uh, highly visible locations. Um, you know, you don't have public coming to the building, it's not like a, uh, like an automotive dealership, so, um, so that's a little bit about the building, uh, its construction and the materials. In terms of that stone veneer that will be on the foundation walls on the west and south sides, it will be, uh, a stacked stone veneer. Um, there are, uh, probably lots of examples around, uh, but actually it's the same stone veneer that's being used on the, um, auto body shop that's being constructed, um, behind the, the Tully BMW, uh, dealership currently. So I think that covers everything that I wanted to say about the building, uh, but I would be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Any mechanical units on the roof? And if so, would they, they would be screened?
That is a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that because the HVAC design has not been completed yet. Uh, but I can get back to you on that. But yes, the, I mean, the, the general intent would be to minimize view of any rooftop units to the maximum extent feasible.
Okay, yeah, so you would be amenable to stipulation, is that, I think that's in our.
It is.
It is.
Requirement, anyway, you'd need a waiver if you weren't going to do it, but we don't have the greatest adherence to that sometimes, so. We'll see this one a lot, so I'll remember it.
Yeah, and again, the, the, yeah, no, understood. I think, um, you know, again, the, the, where the building sits on the site, um, and, and how far it is from the, from West Glenwood Street, I think, you know, public, um, visibility, visibility from the public way to this, uh, will, will already kind of, to the building itself will be, um, somewhat minimal.
Yeah, I was thinking just from the highway, probably.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Harper?
Um, just out of curiosity, I'm sure it fluctuates, but approximately how many vehicles do you anticipate coming through the auction each week?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
No. Are these just vehicles that you're selling from your own inventory, or is this is open to any dealer, or?
This is, um, I, I did just receive a message from the owner, it's about a hundred vehicles.
Okay.
Per auction.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant, members of the board? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you. I understand from the drawings that access is through West Glenwood Street. That's the primary in and out, right? I saw a note from email on, on, uh, November second, that if the usage shifted, you'd have to have a second point of access. And is, is that through West Hobart Street, that dedicated paper street, or are you not worried about that until it changes?
I can, I can answer that one. Um, yeah, that, that's really, um, it would be, if there's any, you know, I think the fire department was okay from a life safety perspective, having one entrance and exit due to the fact that it's really a private site. The pub, it's not open to the public, that sort of thing. Um, and with their concern was if it were to ever change, they would then want to require a secondary, uh, way out. Uh, the, the obvious way for us, I think, would be through Stetson Street, which is due south, um, you know, on the BJ's side of the property, which would go down to kind of the intersection of Stetson and Sexton. If you look on sheet three of the site plan, um, there's basically a driveway that's, I mean, it's in very rough shape today, but that would need to be improved. Back when the auto body shop was proposed on the site, uh, it actually had been proposed for, to, to basically become a full twenty-four foot wide road. Um, but that's not needed at this point in time, and obviously if any change in use or expansion to this were to happen in the future, we would be back before the board with a, another amended site plan, and that, that issue would be dealt with at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I'll go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody here in the building that, uh, does any opposition or question on the plan? I'm not seeing anybody, anybody online. Not seeing anybody? Okay, anybody who should speak in favor of the plan? Here or online? Okay, not seeing any. Any further questions by the board while we're in the hearing? Okay, no questions. Uh, thank you for the applicant and, uh, the architect. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and, uh, open the meeting. So, um, I think most of you have seen this application a couple of times. But, uh, yeah, so most of the site is, um, pretty much as. But, yeah, so most of the site is pretty much as was originally planned and is under construction, actually, you can kind of see, see it going on. Just the building is kind of a change there. I don't particularly have any concerns. It seems like it's a dealer only, not open to the public. The material changes look pretty reasonable, look pretty consistent with the kind of totally other buildings that are reasonably close by too, so it seems pretty, pretty reasonable to me. But I'm looking, any comments by anybody? Any questions or, or within the board? No? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Remind people there are a couple of.
Actually, Scott.
Go ahead.
Paul, the email I sent you on the traffic contribution, were you aware of that?
Yes, thanks, Scott. Yeah, we, we, we're, that's totally fine, as are the rest of the stipulations.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we have the, I think there are 14 stipulations, or Larry?
Scott, do we need to add a stipulation on the?
The traffic, yes.
Contribution?
Yes.
And the date of the plans for the fire department is still on November 3rd?
Correct.
And the letter from Joe Manola is still December 20th?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
One other suggestion, actually, cars cannot be unloaded to the lot from Daniel Webster Highway and West Glenwood, just, just to have a second area there.
Yeah, was that?
Number seven.
That wasn't on the original stipulation?
Actually, it said Daniel Webster Highway, but it didn't indicate West Glenwood, and I think in the discussion.
Add West Glenwood?
Sorry, just, or Scott, maybe you can, what, you're talking about amending an existing stipulation?
Number seven.
Number seven.
Yeah, number seven.
Oh, oh, unload the lot from Daniel Webster Highway.
Or West Glenwood.
Or West Glenwood.
Just have to unload all on the site, which appears to be the intent by the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Want to make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Riley?
So I would make a motion to approve new business A21-0267 site plan, Roscommon Investments LLC, and that approval would be with a finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NRO Section 190-146D, and that will have a total of 15 stipulations. Stipulation one is, reading is written in the staff report. Stipulation number two being a waiver request, a waiver from Section 190-279 EE requiring existing conditions to be shown on adjacent properties, that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three is also a waiver request, being a waiver from Section 190-172 D4C, requiring better quality facade materials, that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations four, five, and six to read is written in the staff report. Stipulation number seven will be updated to read. Cars cannot be unloaded to the lot from Daniel Webster Highway or West Glenwood Street. Stipulations eight through 14 to read is written in the staff report. And then stipulation number 15 to be added. And should that be, should that be, in terms of the timing, is it, do we usually do that prior to signing the plan?
Yes.
All right, so stipulation number 15 shall read prior to the chair signing the plan, the applicant shall make a, a traffic impact contribution of $4,200, consistent with the email from Wayne Husband dated January 6, 2022.
Okay. So we have that motion by Mr. Riley to approve of the 15 stipulations as stated. We have a second. Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none? That motion passes. All right. Thanks a lot. Moving on.
Good thing, everyone.
New business site plan, this is case number A21-0286, Merico Real Estate Company owner, U-Haul Company of Eastern Mass, applicants. This is an application in acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to expand the existing U-Haul facility by adding 6,000 square feet of storage units. This property is located at 11 Northwest Boulevard. So at this point, I'd ask from the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Meehan?
So moved.
Okay, so a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Meehan. Any second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? That motion passes, and we have jurisdiction. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Earl Blatchford from Hayner's Swanson, representing the applicant, U-Haul of Eastern Mass. Also attending via Zoom is Scott Chase from U-Haul, who can answer any questions that I'm not able to or chime in on any information he'd like to add. Just one quick thing I'd like to point out on just the way it's listed on the agenda is it says 6,000 square feet of storage? That actually should be 7,000 square feet.
Okay.
Of new, of new storage. So the, the purpose, and, great, thank you, Linda. The purpose of the application is seeking an amendment to NR-1908 for a change of use from the previous use of truck and trailer leasing, use number 81, to self-storage, use number 193 as the primary use, with a remaining minor use of truck and trailer leasing, again, use number 81, at their existing site at 11 Northwest Boulevard. The location is, you can see on the aerial display, the subject site, which is outlined in yellow, it's identified as Map I, Lot 31, is located on the westerly side of Northwest Boulevard, approximately 400 feet south of the signal at Amherst Street. The lot area is 2.53 plus or minus acres, and it's plus or minus because it's, it's defined on the back by the Brook and Wetlands. Present zoning is Park Industrial, and the entire site is within the water protection overlay district as well. Butters to the north or towards the top, immediate butters, Greystone Plaza to the north, Northwest Plaza across the street to the east, Wright Space Storage, a similar but larger facility directly south, and then the Brook and Associated Wetlands butt the property to the west, and on the other side is Merrimack. Could you go to the next plan, please, one of the existing conditions? Thank you. So again, this is, this plan is based on a survey of the entire property. Again, we show the Brook to the west and the associated buffer lines to the property, which are the 75-foot prime wetland from, basically from the back edge of the property. There's 150-foot conservation zone from the top of Bank of Brook, there's 250-foot shore land protection buffer from the, from the top of Bank of Brook. And then onsite, there is a drainage swale, man-made drainage swale along the southerly property line, the southerly sideline, I should say, and that has become jurisdictional over time, and that has a 20-foot buffer associated with it. So, and everything we're proposing is, does not touch any, any of those buffers. So everything is, is outside of the buffer areas. The lot has got 238 feet of frontage on Northwest Boulevard. It has a uniform lot width of 238 feet, and the maximum depth of the lot is 480 feet from front to back. The existing parking area in the front portion is about 30,000 square feet of impervious. As I said, it's been used, the original site plan was approved in 1998 for truck leasing, and the property was used for that purpose until just recently, they moved that operation over to the new facility at 476 Amherst Street. The site has a single curb cut, which we'll continue to use, and there's also a 420-square-foot modular office building that has been there since the beginning. Site is serviced by municipal sewer, water, natural gas, and power and communications. Yes, sorry, thank you. The, there is, just to the west of the parking area, there is a, a grass or a swale which basically sheet flow off from the parking area, gets in that swale, it runs kind of a, a down and back per the original design. It was designed as a old, kind of old-school grass treatment swale, and then it discharges to the man-made swale along the southerly property line, which flows to the west into the prime wetland area and to the Brook. The site basically is a relatively flat site. It is gently sloping from the street towards the back of the site, and the soils are generally well-grained, windsor-type soils. The, could you go to the next plan, the demolition and paving plan, and just briefly, and then we'll go to the next plan after that? So we kind of did two plans just for clarity, because there's some minor removal of curb and a couple of landscaped islands and a small amount of paving, which occurs first. I'll explain that in a minute. So we are adding to that existing 30,000 plus or minus square feet of impervious, we're adding a little over 2,000 square feet, about 2,135 square feet of new pavement. The, the upper left corner, the two interior islands on either side of the office, and one right to, on the left side of the entrance drive as you're coming into the site. Those areas are getting paved to set the site up for, for the storage buildings. And the other thing that happens is all of the current pavement markings are coming off. Lynda, could you go to the next plan, please? So once that work is done, they are proposing to bring in, the storage units are going to be factory-built buildings. They bring them in on flatbed trucks, and they set them in place with a crane at the, at the locations that we have designated on the, on the plan. The buildings are then securely anchored in place, and underground power is run from the office building out to the individual buildings to power interior and exterior lighting and any security measures that they want in place. The, so basically, we're, as I said, we're proposing 7,000 square feet of new storage buildings, and these are small, small type units. Basically, we're showing between 100 square feet and 150 square feet, the largest ones. That mix could change a little bit, but the overall square footage that we're proposing won't. When they order the buildings, they make a final decision on the mix of the size of the units, but this is a layout that you will see. There are two existing storage trailers that have been onsite. They're currently onsite, they'll continue to be onsite, used for storage. They would be the largest, they're each about 410 square feet, so they're larger than the new ones that are proposed, and those are included in. The total storage that we've counted is, for approval, is 7,820 square feet. So 7,000 new, 820 existing. And the, as I said, the, there will be on the buildings, the new buildings, they will have exterior wall packs, there'll be full cutoff LED wall packs to supplement the current lighting. There is some pole-mounted lighting at the front of the site, so this will supplement sighting, lighting adjacent to the new buildings. We're also proposing additional landscaping to supplement what's out there now. We're adding some more decorative plantings out along the front and dressing up either side of the driveway, and then we're adding a few evergreens around the rain garden and in a couple of the locations, just to beef up the landscaping that's out there now. The drainage swale that I previously described, the existing condition, it is fairly silted up, hasn't been maintained over the years. So what we're proposing to enhance that is we're going to go in, re-excavate a 100-foot pre-treatment grass swale, and then that's going to flow into a proposed rain garden and, which is going to enhance the stormwater, you know, we've got a minor, very minor increase in stormwater flow, so this is going to more than compensate that, but it's going to enhance the treatment of the stormwater considerably, so that, we think that's a good improvement. The, the open space is not a problem required in this zone, is 20%. We're a little over 71% open space provided. And the site is basically going to be a self-service, 24-hour-a-day, seven-hour, seven-day-a-week facility. It's not, you know, it's not gated. Basically, they use card swipe systems. They also have some apps that can be used on people's phones, and they also monitor the site from 476 Amherst Street, so it's a, you know, it's a, it's a low-impact but 24-hour, seven-day, that people can come and access their units. Lynda, could you go to the, I just want to kind of go through the building photos that are, the first one sort of shows how, I don't know if you can zoom in on those a little bit? But basically, this is literature from one of the manufacturers. This is from Miller, who is one of the potential providers, not necessarily the one, but they, so as you can see, the units come in, in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the units come in on a flatbed truck, and the photo right below that, you can see that the, the unit is being set with a crane, and then if you can, yeah, so that, these are kind of facsimiles of, of what the units would look like. Obviously, the orange and white are going to be pretty close to what the U-Haul units will look like. The next photo is actually, the next couple of photos are actually U-Haul, from a U-Haul site, and you see there's some, there's variety to the, you know, the size of the units, and again, they'll make a final decision on the mix of the size of the units, but the overall square footage will be as permitted. And then they can be arranged, the next photo sort of shows how they can be, you know, arranged adjacent to each other. Ours, they can go back to back, as we have them on the, in one location, but, and again, these are U-Haul units at one of their existing sites. And then the last photo shows how they run power and can have, you know, a power feed, there's a security camera on the corner of the building, and there's various security measures and power that's provided to the units once they're set. Just to give you an idea of what the finished product is going to look like. As far as department approvals and sign-offs that we've gotten, as I said before, there are, there are no zoning issues associated with this and no conservation commission issues that we needed to. we needed to address, we've addressed all of the planning department comments that we've received to date, that was on the checklist, following the technical review committee review, we received engineering department comments beginning of this week, we responded back to those in writing today and indicated that, there were a couple of minor, there were a couple of notes that they wanted to add to the plan, and we just, we responded back that we would add them to the plan, but indicated that we were going to get through tonight's meeting before we did any changes to the plan, didn't make sense to do that, and we'd like to do just in one clean effort. The fire department didn't have any comments and they signed off on December 15th, traffic department had one comment, which was requesting a $2,600 traffic impact fee for the Amherst Street corridor fund, and our client has agreed to that, which we indicated in our engineering response letter. And because this is in the water supply protection district, Don Ware at Penachuk reviewed the plan, the stormwater design, and he signed off on that, he approved that on December So, the last thing in my presentation is we have, we're requesting three waivers tonight, you have a three-page letter which kind of details, and if it's acceptable to the board, if I can, I can kind of give you the abbreviated overview of it, if you wish, or?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're pretty straightforward, so, and, and there's, as I said, there's more detail in the letter that you have in your file. So, request number one is from the land use code section 190-172, which deals with architectural design and construction standards for non-residential structures, and as I've said in my presentation, these are kind of standard factory-built storage units with shed-type roofs, metal construction, kind of a specialized, you know, structure and keeping similar buildings around the city and pretty much across the country. The color schemes, basically, orange and white, follow U-Haul's standard corporate branding and we prefer not to deviate from that. So, that's the first request, pretty standard building standards waiver request. The second request is from section 190-198, which talks to the minimum parking requirements. In the parking calculations on the plans, the minimum parking requirement is nine spaces, we're proposing to provide three, including, including one handicap accessible space. There are two other spaces which are for basically parking vans or small box trucks for renting to customers. So, basically, as far as customer car parking, we're requesting a waiver for three spaces where nine, minimum nines are required. And basically, those spaces will be used on a very limited basis, there'll be a maintenance staff which will periodically be coming to the site to, you know, tend to units and, but as a rule, the office won't be occupied, and then leasing staff, if somebody wants to come over and see the unit at the site, then leasing staff will come over with the customer and show them the unit, but if any of you have a storage unit, you know that customers who have units, they drive to the site, they park in front of their unit, and they unload or load or whatever they're doing, and then they drive off the site, so just based on experience, they know they need very little parking, so that's the basis of the parking waiver, and then the third and final waiver is section 190-279.ee, which is basically related to the topograph, detailed topographic survey of abutting parcels. If you recall from the aerial, all of the abutting parcels to this site are considerable, especially Northwest Plaza, are considerably bigger than this site, and it would be a huge expense to our client to have to do detailed surveys of all those adjacent properties. So, what we've done, as, as we've done recently, we've provided a, basically, a thousand-foot city of, you know, city GIS vicinity plan, which was attached to the waiver request letter and, and would be part of the permanent record, but basically, you know, we feel we've shown, between that and the detailed survey that we've provided on the site, we've provided all the necessary information for staff and the board to be, be able to make judgments on this site and have all the information they need to do so. And just in general, in concluding on the waivers, we think that the, all three waiver requests meet the spirit and intent of the site plan regulations in that the proposed plan provides for a safe, accessible, and functional project that does not adversely impact the public, and second, we feel strict compliance with the regulations would pose a hardship of a necessary expense to the applicant without adding any practical value to the project, so. That concludes my formal presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or members of the audience have, and as I said, if there are any questions that I can't answer, especially of an operational nature, then Scott Chase is, is on Zoom call and I can have him jump in.
Okay, thanks. I just have one question on the, since it is in that one or the water supply district. I assume there's no hazardous material storage allowed in any of the units?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and that's a, that's a policy thing, it's not a required thing on a plan, on the plan for this type of location or anything, or?
The, the board could certainly request that a note reflects the overlay district standards be added to the plan, but I expect it's likely a U-Haul policy that hazardous material cannot be stored there, and it is inherent with the zoning district as it exists, that that restriction exists, so I don't, I don't believe you need to add it as a note to the plan.
Got it, okay, yep. And just confirm that, that it is a policy?
Yeah, Scott, do you want to, you want to speak to that?
Hello, good evening.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, it's, it's our policy, it's in our rental contract that no hazardous materials can be stored.
Okay, great. Any other questions by the board of the applicant? All right, thanks.
Great, thank you for your time.
At this point, I'd open up, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question in the plan? Not too many falling anymore, right? Okay, nobody in the audience standing up, so, anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, all right, give the board one more opportunity while in the hearing to ask any questions of the applicant or staff. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing then. All right, so we have changed use or changed function on the site anyway, to storage, seems pretty straightforward, pretty low-impact, pretty consistent with the other parcels around it, so seems like a good use to me, but anybody have any other comments that, or questions that they want to talk with the board about? All right, anybody want to extend a motion? Mr. Meehan, go ahead.
I need to wake up and get my shirt. What would be the date in stipulation six?
That would be January 3rd, 2022.
January.
January 3rd.
January.
I forgot the February.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve new business project 821-0286 site plan, finding the planning board appro, believes it meets the requirements outlined in site plan NRO 190-146D. The request for a waiver of 190-172 is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for a waiver of 190-198, which requires a minimum number of parking spaces, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, the request for a waiver of 190-279.ee, which requires showing existing conditions off-site, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Numbers four and five is written by staff. Number six, noting dated January 3rd, 2022. Number seven through 11 is written by staff.
All right, so you have that motion to approve by Mr. Meehan with the 11 stipulations as in, as stated, and do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, new business site plan, case number 821-0287, this is Cash Max Properties LLC owner, this is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendments to change the use from 358 square foot of residential to retail convenience store use and to formally classify the 1,518 square feet of existing residential unit as legally non-conforming this property works in 136 East Hollis Street. So, before we begin, has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? So, we have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes? Okay, Steve, you are going to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger, I'm a project manager with Heiner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Before I continue, Mr. Chairman, unless anyone has any objections, does anyone care if I take this off?
No, you can, you're right there, you're okay.
I just find it easier for everyone to hear me if I speak without it, I'm not standing remotely close to anyone, so. I am here tonight representing Cash Max Properties LLC, joining me in the audience is Mr. Kandaraj Krishna Kumar from Cash Max Properties and attorney Andrew Pearlman from Prunier &amp; Pearlman, providing legal counsel. As you stated, we're here seeking site plan approval to amend plan number NR0867 for a couple of items, the first is to change the use of 358 square feet of residential to a convenience store use, and the second, to formally classify the existing one-story 1,518 square foot residential unit as residential, and I'll explain what that means in a little bit. Quickly, some, some background lot information, the site we're dealing with has an address of 136 East Hollis Street, it does have frontage, it's a corner lot, so it does have frontage on East Hollis and the abutting Street, C Street, it's lot 15, map 40, it's 0.163 acres in size, which is 7,113 square feet, it's in the GI general industrial zone, but it does have transit-oriented development overlay district accompanying it, the abutting lots are a mix of commercial and residential uses. Now, back in, on September 27th of 1999, under a different site plan, the site received a variance to allow three parking spaces where 11 are required, and if you look at the plan up on the board, those three spaces are in the, the back portion of the lot, directly behind the area I have shaded in green, and, and the access from those three spaces is out onto C Street, that's the only access to the site there. That, that, at that same zoning board meeting, a special exception was granted to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use, and basically, what, what that was for at the time was the use that was in, basically, the, the retail portion of the site, it was a, a dive shop, a dive meaning, you know, swim, you know, swim diving and whatnot, and that site plan that went before the board back in 2000, it proposed to construct a one-story addition which was in accompanying indoor pool, because the, the user of that shop, you could get your dive certification and you needed, obviously, to, you know, be submerged in a pool to, to do so, so if you look at the plan, the area that's shaded in green, that was the one-story addition, and that's where that, inside that building was a pool. Now, at some point in time, and this goes back to one of the tasks that our site plan is accomplishing, and I, I don't know when, and this was done at some point by a former landowner, when, when the dive shop vacated the site, the, the building addition that had the existing pool was converted to a, a residential unit, as far as we know, it wasn't done legally, so, so basically, so when we're requesting to, to formally classify what's now an existing one-unit residential, we're just trying to bring it into the correct compliance to, to, like I said, formally make it residential where some, somehow a long time ago that just got missed, you know, through, through the correct channels. So, now, as, as I mentioned, the three parking spaces are behind the site and they do access out onto C Street, the, in it, actually, getting, going back to those three spaces for a minute, it's been the history of those site, so there's three residential units, each unit gets one space, and, and my client is, the, the building's totally vacant right now, so when, when he rents it back out, the, the three units, that is going to be in the lease, so everyone who, who chooses to live there and sign a rental agreement, they will understand that they, there are three spaces, they get one space, you know, so what, if they have another car or whatnot, that's, that's their own problem, but that's going to be part of the, the leasing process here. So, the existing building layout right now on, on the first floor, if you look at the areas shaded in yellow and blue, that, so the first floor is the vacant retail store, and then that small area in blue and back, that is a studio apartment. So, the other part of what our site plan accomplishes is that, that's the conversion, where we are proposing to change that studio apartment just into additional convenience store space, so the entire first floor from, from the, the shaded yellow area will extend all the way back, that whole first floor will be a convenience store space. Now, on the, so, then the three residential units will be, one of them will be the existing one highlighted in the green area, and then if you look at the, the shaded yellow portion of the building, there's a second and third floor there, on each floor, there's a separate residential unit, so, so basically, we're just kind of internally reshuffling the, the uses there, so where there's residential units and retail now, will still wind up with retail and, and three residential units, so that's really kind of the crux of, of the whole plan. With regards to stormwater, we're really proposing no physical changes to the, to the site, with the exception of in back with the parking spaces, we are showing, adding 70 square feet of pavement, and that's simply to make the three spaces conform to the, the standard nine-foot width that is required. The site plan from 20 years ago had measured out that those three spaces had to be, total 27 feet for, for a reason that I don't know, it didn't get built to that width. It didn't get built to that width, so we're just adding that pavement to make it conform. So, it really is a small increase in impervious, but given what it's for, we consider that to be insignificant, and will have no effect on the site. We are in the TOD zone, and that requires an accompanying site suitability report, so I can quickly run through that for you and the characteristics of that and how our site meets that. There are seven characteristics for the site plan suitability report. The first is the analysis of the ability of the proposed use and existing uses to coexist, and the potential impacts that proposed and existing adjoining and surrounding uses and buildings may have upon one another. The previously approved uses for the site are a retail, commercial use, and residential apartments. The purpose of this application is simply to expand the retail, commercial use by 358 square feet, and to formally classify one of the apartments as residential. I had talked about the original plan back from 2000. The existing retail, commercial, residential uses remain the same as they have been for some time. The immediate surrounding uses include residential apartment buildings, various retail stores, a barber shop, Dunkin' Donuts, and multiple automotive service shops. So, the existing uses for our site continue to blend into the neighborhood as they have over the course of the building. The second point is analysis of any impacts on significant natural architectural, visual, or aesthetic qualities of the surrounding environment. There are no proposed impacts to any of these, as we really aren't proposing any physical changes to the site, other than, you know, just expanding the pavement to meet our parking requirements. Point three, the analysis of health and safety impacts on customers, residents, employees, and the general downtown and inner-city population. This project will create no adverse impacts to any of those items, as it maintains past uses that are consistent with this site. Point four, analysis of economic or property value impacts. The building is currently vacant, so if we're fortunate enough to receive approval tonight, my client plans to, you know, install another convenience store in the first floor and, you know, get some tenants back into those three empty apartments. You know, so certainly, that's a benefit to the city as opposed to, you know, having a vacant building, you know, sitting there unoccupied. Point number five, analysis of traffic and parking impacts. I mentioned the zoning variance we received for the parking spaces. Due to the physical constraints with this being a developed parcel, the three spaces are all this site can support. The owner dedicates one space to each of the three residential units, and the retail use portion of the site will rely, as it always has, on surrounding, on-street parking. We don't anticipate the repopulation of this site to create any traffic or parking impacts. Point number six, the analysis of the adequacy of existing municipal facilities and services. Municipal services to this site include existing sewer, public water by Penet Chuck, gas by Liberty Utilities, and overhead telecommunications, power, and cable. Curbside trash pickup is available through the use of City of Nashville-provided bins. There's no additional municipal facilities or services that will be required to support the uses of this site. The last point, number seven, the consistency of the site plan with the mixed-use district objectives and guidelines established, the master plan and surrounding plan and development principles. The proposed site plan and its use is consistent with the purpose of the Transit-Oriented Development District and the 2004 East Hollis Street Area Plan adopted as part of the master plan. The site plan is also consistent with the many adjacent uses of the surrounding neighborhood. With regards to technical review comments, as mentioned earlier by Mr. McPhee, we received an email from this week from Mark Repalia of the Fire Marshal's Office. They have no issues with the plan. We received an email from Joe Mandola of the Engineering Department with his comments, similar to the last project you just approved. I did respond to Mr. Mandola. I've consulted with my client about his comments. He's fine with all of them, so it's our intent to follow through with those. We just won't formally present our response to Mr. Mandola until we have a revised plan to give him, but I did want to email and communicate to him what our responses were to his comments, and that we're okay with those. And we also received an email from Wayne Husband of the Traffic Department requesting a $5,600 contribution to the East Hollis Traffic Corridor. Again, I've consulted with my client, and that is acceptable to us. Lastly, we are asking for one waiver with this plan, and as we have been requesting for some time, the waiver is section 190-282B9, and that is the existing conditions and topography within 1,000 feet of the site. And as I've been saying to the board, and as my colleague, Earl Blatchford, did on the last site, it would be a significant cost to any applicant to have to survey the existing site within 1,000 feet in every direction. It actually comes out to about 72 acres of additional detailed survey, and performing that task, not only would it be extremely time-consuming, but it offers no practical impact to the approval we're seeking here tonight. We believe the site is being developed in a responsible manner in accordance with the Nashua Land Use Code. The recommended conditions of approval are all acceptable to my client, and we respectfully seek your approval. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions any of you have.
Okay, thanks. Questions by the board? Mr. Barlow?
I just have one quick question. I just, the retail use that's proposed is going to be consistent with what had been the retail use, generally speaking, is that right?
Yeah, I actually believe there's still a sign on there that if, when, prior to the building being vacant, it was a retail type of, you know, convenience store at some point.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Mr. Meehan?
I'm just, thank you. You know, it's an eyesore in the neighborhood, there's plants growing over the sidewalks, there's missing siding, there's softets that have fallen off. Is this, when you say renovation, are there improvements intended for the facade and dealing with some of the overgrown plants and all of that? Is that?
I mean, certainly, you know, landscaping to clean that up, you know, that's something my client can do, in terms if he's, you know, going to fix up the outside of the building. If you give me a few minutes, I can consult with him.
Sure.
Yes, that is in his plans to do that. He's been in the process of doing a lot of internal renovations to improve the living conditions, to get tenants back in there, but he does have that on his to-do list to clean up the outside of the building as well.
All right. Other questions by the board? Ms. Harper?
Just a question, maybe this is for staff. As far as allowing the, you know, the former pool area that is now, has been used for residential, making it officially residential, is there any other part of the process, an inspection or anything to deem it?
I'm sure they updated the, you know, electrical or do anything within the building, but the building department would be involved with that.
Okay, thank you.
And the fire department has had no...
Oh, your mic is off.
Your mic's off. Oh. Turned off again, okay. All right, and the fire department has looked at it as well for access and other things.
Hi, thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd ask that anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question of the plan? Does anybody else? Nope? Okay, so, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Hearing done, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Okay, none? I will go ahead and close the hearing. All right, so we have sort of just some, what looks like a cleaning-up kind of set of plans here, which seems like a good idea to me, and, you know, certainly, any improvement to that building seems like a positive impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding area, so I'm pretty much in favor of it. We do have, I think staff can comment, but the letter from Wayne Husband and the applicant's acceptance of the East Hollis Street Traffic Corridor account, that was $5,600.
Correct.
That probably should go with the stipulation, just because it's not sort of listed here if somebody wants to make a motion. I think the fire department date is...
Actually, that can be stricken. The fire department is okay with the project.
Okay, so you could get rid of number five, or you could replace number five, I guess, with the traffic corridor account contribution. And the one from Joe Mandola, that would be?
January 4th.
January 4th, 2022. Okay. All right, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business project 821-0287, property located at 136 East Hollis Street, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO 190-146D. The recommendation is subject to eight stipulations. The first is a request for waiver of NRO section 190-279EE with respect to existing conditions. Shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two and three, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number four, amended to the date of January 4th, 2022. Stipulation number five, as written in the staff report, shall be stricken and replaced with the condition that the applicant shall make a $5,600 application to the East Hollis Street Traffic Corridor account prior to the chair signing the plan. Stipulations number six through eight, as written in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So, we have that motion to approve with the eight stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're sort of wrapping up here on our agenda. We do have another business item with regard to the tentative agenda. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at this technical review being January 3rd, and want to make any motions as to whether there's any proposals of regional impact, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had an opportunity to review the agenda, and I would like to make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley for no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, I don't know if we have any other discussion items, anything that you had? Scott?
The election of officers?
Annual meeting, business agenda.
Oh, okay, yep. Is that, do we have to start like the new? Not really, right?
You don't need to adjourn the meeting, in my opinion. You can simply continue on.
Okay, so, we have the annual election of officers. I mean, the way this goes is, I think, who's in charge? I think Ms. Harper, you were in charge of it this time, right?
Yes.
And so, do you want to present what the nominations were, and then you can, someone can propose basically a slate, is usually how we do it, and then just kind of vote on it.
Well, the consensus from each of the board members was to nominate the current officers in office for another term, including yourself as the chair, Mr. Barley as the vice chair, and myself as the secretary.
Okay, so, did you want to make that motion? Good, sure.
Maybe somebody who's not.
He's not an operator.
Anybody can.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger.
Happy to do it. I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to vote on the following, or to nominate the following officers for election to the City Nashua Planning Board. For chair, Mr. Scott Leclair. For vice chair, Mr. Adam Barley. And for secretary, Ms. Maggie Harper.
Okay, so we have that motion for that slate of officers for the following year by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Anything else? Nothing else on our agenda? Okay. If no one has anything else, I'd make a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hirsch?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we have that motion to adjourn by Mr. Hirsch. We don't need to second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We are adjourned, 9/26. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.